Good evening and welcome to the August 8th, 2023 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you're here tonight and would like to address council, please register with the staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to city council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. Our light system is a three-minute system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. And after three minutes, the red light will appear. And at that time, please take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The city code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council mean matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, organization. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Dr. Ray Johnson with Dominion Outreach Worship Center will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Harris will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is a practice of council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It's always a pleasure and an honor to be here with you each and every time I'll have the opportunity to come before you. Thank you so much for your leadership. It is so good to see your refreshing faces on the city council. Lets us know that our Heavenly Father indeed is watching over our city. Shall we bow our heads? Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to tend to the people's business of the city of Newport News. Thank you for your presence that is always present among us. Heavenly Father, we place our complete and total confidence and trust in you that you'll provide wisdom to the members of our city council and our mayor. Thank you for your hand of protection always being guided upon us. Thank you for your wisdom and your grace that is with us each and every day. We thank you for these moments of opportunities to deliberate, to ensure that the city of Newport News is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Let your presence rest upon us on this evening. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Please go ahead and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public hearings, page three. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing change of zoning, Charlie Zulu 2023-0001 to H&amp;S Associates from C1 Retail Commercial to R5 Low Density Multiple Family Dwelling with Proffers for a 7.95 acre parcel located at 15459 Warwick Boulevard. The proposed change of zoning is consistent with the One City, One Future 2040 Plan and meets several objectives of the Denby Warwick Area Plan. On July 19th, 2023, the City Planning Commission voted 8-0 to recommend approval of change of zoning number Charlie Zulu-2023-0001 with Proffers. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any questions at this time? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 53. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform-2023-0006 to waive properties to allow for the construction and operation of a car wash facility located on a 1.22 acre parcel located at 12570 Warwick Boulevard, Zone C2 General Commercial. The proposed use is consistent with the One City, One Future 2040 Plan. On July 19th, 2023, the City Planning Commission voted 8-0 to recommend approval of conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform-2023-0006 with conditions to city council. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
Mr. Bobby Willis.
Mr. Bobby Willis?
Yes.
Doctor, come up.
Good evening, distinguished members of the council. And Mr. Mayor, my name is Bobby Willis, a long-term resident of Newport News. I am owner and operator of Cool Wave Car Washes. I started the company 20 years ago here in the city, built the first location at this 12570 Warwick Boulevard location. And I'm a true believer in reinvesting in the city that you live in. So I have these two properties that are older properties that are going on 20 years old now. So I want to come in and completely take the existing buildings down and build brand-new buildings and bring them up to specs of, you know, the latest and greatest in the car wash business. So if you have any questions for me, be glad to answer any questions, but, you know, not a lot else to say.
Do we have any questions?
Can I get a free wash?
Actually, that's part of our marketing campaign out of the gate. So yes, we will be giving away free washes for the first two weeks, so.
Oh, really? Okay.
Amazing. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Oops, Councilman. Oops, Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 91. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit Charlie Uniform-2023-0007 to waive properties Colony LLC to allow for the construction and operation of a car wash facility on a .45 acre parcel located at 1320 Warwick Boulevard, Zone C1 Retail Commercial. The proposed use is consistent with the One City, One Future 2040 Plan. On July 19th, the City Planning Commission voted 8-0 to recommend approval of Charlie Uniform-2023-0007 with conditions to city council. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Willis?
Sir?
Yes, this is the second property that I am planning to renovate, or actually level the property and build new facility there. So if there are any questions about that facility, be glad to answer any of those questions.
Do we have any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 129. Item E4 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning ordinance text amendment number Zulu Tango-2023-0002, amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter 45, Zoning Ordinance, Article 22, C3 Regional Business District to eliminate the off-street parking requirements for residential uses in the C3 Regional Business District. On July 19th, the City Planning Commission voted 8-0 to recommend approval of Zulu Tango-2023-0002. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page 137, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of July 25th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, item F1?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you. Other city council actions, next on our agenda, page 150, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution expressing the approval of the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board, State Biennial Fiscal Year 2024 and 2025 Performance Contract Renewal and Revisions. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Page 153, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution granting local approval for Western Star Hospital Authority, Inc., doing business as Metro Health EMS, a private emergency medical services agency, to provide certain medical transport services within the city of Newport News. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Appropriations, we have none this evening. We will now move to citizen comments. Item I, citizen comments on matters that are germane to city council. I will call each name in the order that it appears in front of me. Chanel Ketchmore.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members. I know you know who I am. I'm gonna have to find a way to get creative with my intro. But I'm Chanel Ketchmore with Ketchmore Kids. We are a community organization that operates in Newport News. And first, we just wanted to congratulate you on your acceptance into the Harvard City Leadership Program. And we wanted to share that we had our community cleanups this past Saturday and our family fun day on Sunday. Not for accolades, we actually wanted to acknowledge Chief Drew, who walked side-by-side with us in Aqueduct. He picked up trash with us and the kids, so we wanted to thank you for that. And Director Jared Grimes with Newport News Juvenile Services. On Sunday, he and his team joined us for family day at the park. And so we just wanted to acknowledge that and them showing up and the partnerships that we have. And so that is it for this evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it was such a pleasure. I'm sorry I missed it this weekend, but it was such a pleasure seeing you all on the news at the cleanup. And I'm advocating for more of those types of activities for our citizens because I do notice that particularly as we in the South District prepare for more housing, I hope we can have those things in place so people can realize the importance of not littering and how much as your community looks better, people feel better.
Yes.
And so thank you for that and joy. And thank you all for everything you're doing. Sorry I couldn't make it.
It's okay. We have plenty of stuff coming up.
Okay.
That was our pleasure, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Emily Thomas?
Hello? Is this close enough?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Please excuse my work clothes. I have a few things I'd like, questions and concerns, but I'll start with a thank you. Thank you all for letting me speak tonight. And also, thank you for making the work sessions available online. I listened to the one from last time. Really informative, perfect level of detail. I listened to it while I was washing dishes and making sushi. I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce myself, didn't I? I'm Emily Thomas. I'm at 3774 Sherwood Place, Unit C in Newport News. It's like 20 minutes north of here. Yeah, it was a whole lot more convenient to listen to that online than it was to come in person to those work sessions. The second thing I wanted to talk about was my concerns about a news article. It was saying that the city manager getting let go was at a similar time to her initiating an investigation on y'all's credit card records. Before expressing like my questions about this, I'd like to mention a few things. I know the news is not always accurate. I work at the shipyard. And I know that when you're an insider, you can't like confirm or deny what the news is saying. A lot of times, it's not smart to do that. So you just have to kind of sit there and watch and be like, oh crap, that's not right. And also, I learned yesterday by watching that closed session that y'all are allowed to be in closed session for two reasons. For discussing like sensitive personnel stuff, like firing people or something, or hiring people or performance stuff, or for like discussion of sensitive legal stuff. So I did not know this. And I thought that made a lot of sense because, I mean, again, at the shipyard, you can't share all of your sensitive technical information with everybody in the world, even though we're all American citizens, you know, like we can't all know certain sensitive information. So I'm not here to ask you guys the reason why she got let go, but I do have some questions that like stem surrounding this. So my questions for the council are, first of all, can you please assure me that the city manager was not let go for asking difficult questions and holding people accountable and investigating expenses, such as investigating expenses? I would like consolation of that. Second of all, I understand that the closed council session is kind of like a black box. So I'm on the outside. I can't understand all the stuff that's happening on the internal workings, but like, can you guys explain the checks and balances that keep the fraud like this from happening if it was to happen? Like, there's gotta be something in place to stop that if we're being fair, right? And then article, and then the third thing I'm concerned about is can you guys please evaluate your current accountability structure just to ensure that there's no loopholes now or in the future for this kind of corruption? Because I'm not saying that that's what happened here, but I just want, like, I remember learning in history class about this king. I think it was like a king in France several hundred years ago. Okay, I'll make this fast.
Yeah.
And.
And don't worry, well, my closing comments will sort of capture everything.
Okay, okay, yeah. This king in France, he was such a good king that everybody gave him like unlimited rule to do whatever he wanted. And then someone came behind him and was a really horrible king because there was no accountability structure. He'd get away with whatever he wanted to. And then the people ended up revolting because it was so terrible, his leadership. So the hallmark of a responsible city council will be one that puts checks and balances on themselves even when it's not necessarily needed. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Lily Robinson.
First of all, I want to say good evening to y'all.
Good evening, ma'am.
And I want to thank God for being here. The last time I came to y'all, I thought it would be the last. I got everything that I needed with y'all help. And I got in the brand-new building. I came here and showed y'all my keys. I was helping my family, the neighbors, the church, and everybody. But I'm here tonight to tell y'all that stuff, I and we need help. We need y'all to come out there to that Verizon lift-and-rise building. They helped me on the second floor in the wheelchair. When I put in the application in May, Karen Wilson helped me, got Mr. Wilson to call. She told me I had the last disabled apartment. They gave me a runaround for two months. I finally got in there after leaving Jefferson Book Bills and stuff. Soon as I get in there, I'm thinking we're going out back with the disabled signs here. She stops at the elevator. I said, why are you stopping the elevator? They would never give me my apartment number. And she said, you're on the second floor. Then I said to her, why? I say, you got me on the elevator and everything. She gonna turn around and get smart with me and tell me it's a new elevator. I said, okay, so was that one over 10 years ago? And so was in Jefferson Book Bills with them drains and stuff, with the emergency cord and stuff. I goes up there. I haven't been in there a good three weeks. My air conditioner broke two days after. The trash compactor at 2700 broke. They got maggots and flies over there. The electrical stuff go off. I had to suffer a whole week and stuff. And then my wheelchair gave out. Then I had to push myself around on the second floor, taking out my trash and everything. Then I goes and stuff and tell her that I'm gonna get my doctor's cure, which I shouldn't have need. Everybody know I'm in this wheelchair and stuff. Everybody know I'm disabled and stuff. And honey, she didn't have the decency. She wouldn't even fax it to the head people up there and stuff. I had to go to my pharmacy to get him to fax it to them and everything. I called Mr. David and everything. And I told him, the manager stuff, y'all gonna need somebody to come out there and everything. And I just have this right here to give y'all, and y'all can go ahead and do what y'all want with it, and then I'll be back. I need to be moved, my doctor said immediately, with my mental and physical being. I had no business being up there. And it's not only me, they got a man over there in the other building. They giving us a hard time and all that. Before I left to come here today, he had to reset my refrigerator. I turned on the ice, all the ice came out on the floor and everything, just bombarding. I go downstairs and tell them. She tells me, well, what you want us to do? Want me to come up there? Yeah, I'm disabled. I can't get that up there. They're horrible, all three of them. I got their names and stuff. Y'all know who the company is because Newport News, we develop houses, do not own it. As Carl Wilson told me in May and been telling me and everything, because we know they can't build a doghouse because they were stolen and did everything. And the heck I went through. So I'm leaving y'all with this right here.
We'll take it. Thank you, ma'am. We'll come grab it right now.
Mm-hmm, grab it.
We will.
And I'll be back every Tuesday till they move me, and there's more people over there. Can you please send somebody out here?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna keep my cord and stuff.
And I will be at the meeting. They will be, they're having a community meeting at the lift-and-ride.
Excuse me for cutting across you. We went to their so-called community meeting, and they worried about what's outside and everything and all that.
Yeah, because I asked them to do that because I'm concerned about the people putting trash outside of that new building.
You gotta be concerned about what's going on inside and stuff, what they're doing with disabled people and everything and all the rest of them. You got a lot of people over there mad. This is supposed to be brand-new for us.
Yeah, that's why I'm coming over there.
And the first thing they'll say, we tore it up. Now them kids made a deal that trash, uh, thing. And where them mags and all that stuff got in, they're putting in a box. Well, our building is the same way. The garbage is stuck up there. They gotta call the electrician and everything. It's shouting. It's not fair to us. It's not fair. I've been praying to God and working with everything, and now and stuff, I'm in this new building. So Mayor Jones, I'm asking you, could you really help me? And I'd have told them all about you. I need you because Newport News, not only they have no words and stuff. You need to find out the head people.
We'll take a look, ma'am.
And please have David get back in touch with me.
David's right there. Yes, ma'am. He's already behind you.
Well, I give David all the papers. Well, yeah, y'all see my last thing, and thank y'all very much. I had no intention to come to here after the parade.
We're looking, we're looking forward to seeing you at the Southeast parade.
My grand-grandson, he saw you at the boys' club. I thought you were gonna talk bad about me. You were good, though. I know they said they get tired of women. I get tired of this. I'm 77. I just want somewhere decent and quiet and safely.
We'll take care of it, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, y'all. Have a blessing.
Be blessed. Yeah, new business. Our next item is new business. City manager?
No new business to report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney?
Just a reminder that the next council meeting won't be till September 12th. Other than that, I don't have any.
And for those in here, September 12th will be the next council meeting. And Councilman Long will talk about what we have in two weeks. City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Harris?
Yes, and thanks to everyone who came out tonight and everybody who is paying attention and watching online. Being that we don't have another council meeting till September the 12th, is what you said, I want to go ahead and congratulate first Dr. Michelle Mitchell for being appointed our Newport News Public Schools Superintendent. And I believe our teachers have already started preparing in their buildings for the school year. So to all of our students that are returning to school on August 28th, I want to wish them a very good, safe, fun educational school year. And I look forward to getting out there and hopefully celebrating with some of those young people young people at some of the after-school activities and events that take place. And just like I said, I just want to make sure they also understand there is a policy for book bags. I know a lot of people do a lot of the school supplies, events prior to the school year beginning. Just make sure you have clear bags, but I think somebody could confirm this, but they will be issuing those school bags from the school. Is that correct?
Yes.
So just be mindful of that because I know you can save a couple of dollars purchasing book bags, and they won't be able to use those for the school year. So just keep that in mind. And like I said, just good luck to all of our students and wishing a great school year for all of our educators. And that's all I have, Mayor Price. Mayor Jones, I'm sorry.
No worries. Councilman Long?
Yes, at the next meeting, August twenty-second, we're gonna have a conversation about homelessness. So I'm inviting the public to come out. The idea of the meeting is, the first part, we'll talk about the scope of the homeless issue here in the city, talk about the services that city is providing. And the second part is gonna be an opportunity for the public to talk about or ask questions or bring your concerns about the homeless population. The whole idea of this meeting is for us to have a conversation about homelessness, and so we, as a community, can figure out what's the best foot, path forward for our community. So it's really important that we get as many participations as possible. I've heard some complaints and I've heard some concerns, but we need to hear all of the, all of the, you know, we need to hear from everyone to really come up with the best solution for dealing with our homeless population. So again, it's gonna be August twenty-second. It's gonna be the Midtown Community Center at six P M. And invite your friends and neighbors to this event. I think it's gonna be real good, and it's a start for us to really tackle the issue of homelessness. Second thing I want to say, thank you, Catch More Kids, for being out here today and all the community services y'all are providing in the city. You know, it's a model for other organizations to look upon and see what y'all are doing in the community. So I really do appreciate all the hard work that y'all are putting forth. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Woodbury?
No comments.
Councilwoman Vick?
Yes, I would love to thank everyone for coming out tonight and joining us, but also for coming out for the Women's Empowerment Development, Inc.'s first Fit, Fab, and Finance Wellness Expo that took place on Saturday. Of course, with my advertising, I was excited about us being able to do exercise and fitness on the water at Kingly Park. But because it rained so much on Friday night, we could not go to the park, but we had fun and had a great turnout for, at our Down and Girls Cultural Arts Center, as well as the Part Two at the Down and Girls Cultural Arts Center that included the honoring of three community stars, Dr. Terry Best, Joni Ivy, and school board member Ann Cherry, Ann Stevens Cherry. And we also had a great spiritual wellness incoming opening act from our Dunamus Christian Center praise team and mass choir. That was just an awesome experience, and so many people enjoyed it. So we'll be on for next year around the same time, but thanks to everyone who came out. And one other thing is, we're talking about homelessness, Cleon, and what Ms. Lily is talking about, and one of the things I have talked to Karen Wiles about is, as we are looking in our communities to make them better and we're building new housing, I think we need to think of a way to seriously address so much of the litter and things that come in our community. And so I look forward to working with you on the housing issues as well as making our communities better. So thank you.
Councilman Ealing?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to also congratulate Dr. Michelle Mitchell on her new appointment to superintendent. I worked with her close-ups on the school board and just excited to see that she landed that position and is gonna do Newport News a great deal in that new role. I also had recently the opportunity to take the HRT bus, the express bus. That was fun. Me and Mayor Philip Jones was on the bus with Marcia Price, Bobby Scott, and a couple of other people, and it was good to ride the bus with citizens and just to see their daily experience. I also want to talk about the back-to-school event that we're doing on this Saturday at the Town Bank Field off Dresden Drive. We'll be doing, giving away food. We have bounce houses for the kids. And one event you don't want to miss, a lot of y'all said great things about Catch More Kids, but what's next? And Catch More Kids are having a kickball game. And unfortunately, Catch More Kids is gonna lose. So it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're gonna have a good time. Both of us receive grants with the nonprofit. We're doing a lot of things with gun violence, so we wanted to come and partner together and have a kickball game, a friendly competition, but we already know what's next is gonna win. Also, we'll be giving away school supplies for the children as well, so we're excited about that. I also had the opportunity to tour Versibility with Secretary Slater workforce, and just to see all the amazing things that Versibility is doing. It's definitely exciting, and workforce is something I'm passionate about. And just to see so many new ideas and initiatives come to the Hampton Roads area is amazing. We had our what's next meeting last, well, this past Monday at Brooks Crossing. And I'd like to thank Brooks Crossing staff. We had over a hundred and twenty people show up from across, as far as Richmond. So we was excited to see people wanting opportunities in workforce. So Brooks Crossing, thank you for your support. It was class act. And we look forward to having more meetings. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. The only thing I have tonight is to also send a congratulations to Dr. Michelle Mitchell for becoming the new superintendent for Newport News Public Schools. I think she was a phenomenal choice. And even before, you know, the new council came on board, hearing on the campaign trail, it was the relationship between school board and city council, school board and city council. And I want to say that we've been working extremely hard to not only repair that relationship, but also let everyone know across the city that we are not siloed of each other, that we move together. So just want to say again, congratulations to Dr. Mitchell, and looking forward to continuing to strengthen the relationship that we have with the school system. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a few closing comments on my end. The first was, once again, thank you to the school board for their partnership. Dr. Mitchell invited me this week to our N N P S new teacher orientation. We had over three hundred students. They were really excited to give to the kids in our community. And going forward, council will ensure that they are our strongest partners, whether it's Huntington, Budget Time, whatever it is. We all understand that kids are gonna be the future of Newport News. I have a checklist. To Ms. Emily, thank you for coming out and voicing your concerns. I said these comments in the work session, but I'm gonna say them again. So when you listen to the work session, next time you're doing sushi, just, I'm doubling down on these, okay? So the first thing is, I believe that for city council, I think best thing going forward will be a formal handbook that can codify roles and responsibilities. This was actually tried before years ago, but said handbook has to be passed by council. And so I think it failed on like a four or three vote. So I think this time it'll probably pass. There's a lot of things that city council does. They travel a lot to N L C, to sister cities, to E D A site visits. There's a lot that goes into it. And I want to make sure we have council aides. We have a lot of things that council is doing. My job as mayor is not individual actions, but to ensure that we have a governance structure that can help to codify those rules and checks and balances. So top priority between myself and Mr. Archer is we're going to develop said handbook. It's gonna include a lot of different things. A lot of cities already have them. We just don't have one due to certain reasons. That'll be our top priority, and we'll pass that through council. And I look forward to sharing that with citizens. The third thing is, this week, I had a chance to meet the new president of C N U. It was a great conversation. I mentioned in the work session that we need to have a stronger partnership with Christopher Newport. So we're going to create a town and gown committee. That way, we can deliver timely news. I want to invite everyone to his inauguration on Monday. It's gonna be a great time for Newport News to have a rear admiral in the Coast Guard, who was the last superintendent of the Coast Guard Academy, come be our new president is a really big deal. So I want to invite everyone. There's a lot of events. There's fireworks. There's musicians. It's gonna be a good time. This Saturday, I know we have a lot of events with Councilman Ealing. I know there's a gun violence meeting as well, but I know our marketing department is working very, very hard on the Made in Newport News event. That's gonna be in city center. It's gonna be, I believe, from four to eight P M. And according to the flyer, which I read about an hour ago, we're gonna celebrate the people, the businesses, the organizations, and the attractions that make Newport News diverse and unique. And that is what Newport News is. We are diverse and we are unique, and we're always gonna be united, whether it's Chief Drew and three AM phone calls, which we got this morning, or other events. We're always gonna go through the city together. And the last thing to, Ms. Emily, to your concerns, council as a whole, we, you know, we decided to televise work sessions because we want to ensure that we are authentic and that we are visible to the public. Part of that is going to be a city council rotation. And so we're gonna publish it next year, so that way people have time. But for this year, the goal is to have at least one city council meeting in the central and one city council meeting in the north. I think that's the fairest thing for all citizens, and we'll still have those televised as well, as well as the work sessions. That's a lot of things that I've said tonight, but all in all, I want to say thank you for everyone that came out, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.